Before we get started, though, um, I can't help it, I'm a pastor, so we're gonna open this day in prayer. Do you value your empathy? Heavenly Father, for Jesus, I just ask God that you would come into this room tonight, God, that you would let our speech be uplifting. God, that you would show compassion, show mercy, grace and favor to every person in this room. God, I pray that your Holy Spirit would just walk before us and that you would guide us in all that we do. Well, we love you and we thank you. In Jesus's name, amen. So I'm gonna start off tonight, tell you who I am, tell you a little bit about me. My name is Casey. I am the outreach pastor at New Hope Fellowship. And I have a Bachelor of Science in Education for Essential Methodist. I know I look like I'm under the net, but I do. I do. I was a ordinary minister in 2015. I felt the call of God on my heart in 2013 to work for the homeless. And being completely transparent, I was in prayer time, I was praying, "God, how is He gonna use me? How can I help people?" And God's message to me was, "Casey, help the homeless not to be homeless when this life is over." And so I've lived every day since 2013 by these words. I have countless hours spent in research and in volunteerism, you know, because everybody goes with the money and will do something for free, and that was me. Because I wanted to learn and I wanted to be part of that world. It was, it was, um, I don't think, it was I. I've been on staff at New Hope Fellowship for three and a half years. Since I've been there, I've been in charge of the Bible services, I've been the office manager, and now I'm a staff pastor. It is a wonderful, exciting job. Um, but man, I just wanna do what God's called me to do. So I will be the executive director of the New Hope Outreach Center. Uh, and I am excited for you to hear that plan tonight. I'm excited to partner with you because I wanna be your neighbor. And I'm excited to go through this together tonight, go through this process. The next thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna introduce you tonight to an expert panel that we brought in. People who are gonna be on side partnering with us. I'm not doing this by myself, absolutely not, I'm not that smart. The Bible tells us that we are to get wise counsel, and they will help us to be able to do things well. At New Hope Fellowship, we believe that, and that is exactly what we've done. So I'm gonna introduce you to these folks that are standing around the room this evening. After you hear the presentation of the project, they're going to take a couple of minutes and each one of them tell you exactly what they're going to be bringing to the property. So I am gonna start with, I didn't wanna get anybody's title wrong, so I'm gonna write it down. I'm gonna start with Sue Urban. She is the individual stand-up takeaway. She is the CEO of Comtree. Collette Hensley is the Associate Director of Community Development for the Jefferson-Greveland Community Action Agency. Corporal Drew Cruz and Deputy Zach Allen are Jefferson County Sheriff's Department, uh, Homeless Resource Division. Andrew Diddy, we have Andrew back there. She's the Jefferson County Health Education Supervisor at the Jefferson County Health Department. Julian Missel. Julian is the Prevention Specialist for Jefferson County Drug Prevention Coalition. Steve May. Steve's back here with Axios Counseling. Uh, Krista Simpson. She is with Development from Bossa Homes. And then we've also got Nicole Long here this evening. She is the Community Services Program Director with the East Missouri Action Agency out of San Francisco County. So you're gonna get to hear a couple of minutes from all these folks as well. Because we believe in doing life together, and that's the whole purpose of this. So excited for you to hear the plan. Um, I'm excited for you to hear the truth. I'm excited tonight to be able to share this with you after you hear the plan and we let these guys all tell what their part's gonna be. Uh, and we're gonna get the chance to ask questions, and we will answer those for you the best we can. Okay? I'm gonna turn right now over to Pastor Dan Ross. I'd love to get his good shout out.
Thank you, Dan Ross, pastor of New Hope Fellowship. Uh, grew up in this area, about less than a mile from here. Uh, School of Hillsborough, graduated from Hillsborough, family still lives less than a mile from here. Uh, so this, I played ball on these fields when they were first opened again. Uh, so this is an area that I'm very familiar with. Um, we started the process of just by seeing the need for, uh, our county. And we've been involved in our county in different ways, helping, uh, we were feeding over six thousand kids today, not just in our county, but in other places. But we've done that for the last two years during COVID. Uh, we still work with schools to feed kids and those, those types of things. So we aren't community involved as a church. Um, we also do other things, you know, we have events in our church that are community, those kinds of things. I'm active in our community, I'm on the Chamber Board. Uh, I was president of the CASA Board, which is for foster kids, uh, foster care president of that. Uh, for Jefferson County helped get it started, uh, with term limits, so I served six, actually almost seven years, uh, and then left because of the term limits. And so when this came as something that was a need for our county, we started looking at different areas. Honestly, we found a place in Cedarville that we thought might work. Uh, a lot of people said, you know, "That's not a good spot." But we said, "The building is really good." And they said, "It's not a good spot in the county because it's in that corner. It's not located centrally," those kinds of things. So we pursued it still, uh, because it was a great building. And, uh, we had the partners that we have now. Um, and it was owned by the school district, and they had it for sale. And when we went to the meeting, there was someone else that wanted to buy it, but the school district, Northwest School District, said, "Hey, we are sorry, but there is expected growth coming. There's permits." Oh, how about that? You started to talk right into the mic. And so there's, there are, uh, permits for subdivisions and all these things in Northwest School District. And they said, "Pastor Dan, we will look very foolish if we sell this property and then in three years, we have to put out a bond issue to build a several million dollar building." And so that came off the table, uh, and so we started looking, and someone recommended this location. We didn't know about it. And so we looked at it, we talked to, uh, the people that are here, and they said it would work. We could, uh, it's central, really almost center of our county. And it's in a great location, uh, because it's on a highway going between Festus and Hillsborough. And so in what we want to do, what we want to do is we wanna provide a place for people who no longer wanna be homeless. Okay? Everybody has preconceived ideas about everybody, right? If we look at the deputies over there, some people would have preconceived ideas, not to be swayed by the donuts they have in their back pocket. Just kidding. Um, but we have preconceived ideas. And so in those preconceived ideas, we think about the Larry Rice, uh, tent cities, and we think about those homeless shelters, and we think about people living under the bridge, and we think about the drugs, and we think about all of those things. While that's an issue for our whole county, and we actually have a claim for that, but it's not this location. This location will be designated for people who want to get out of their situation. Some people are okay to be homeless. They need help from time to time. They need a shower. They need laundry. Uh, whatever it is, those people are out there, and there are people that are already helping them. We will just be a s- a resource in connecting those that have those needs. So if it's people who wanna stay homeless, who wanna live in, uh, those roots behind lawnmower, those things, that is not who we're bringing here. The people that we will bring here are those that say, "Hey, situationally, I'm homeless, and I don't wanna be homeless." Or maybe there was a tragedy. We don't know what the reasons are. But if they go through our process, and then we bring them in with the purpose of in six months, them being ready to not be homeless and to be making it. There will be development, there will be training, there will be medical, there will be all these things that some of these others will talk about, those things. Our goal is to have a place for eighteen guys and eighteen women that will be here. Okay? It will be gated at the entrance with an intake center. They'll come through there, okay? If they wanna leave, they can leave. We will transport them. Or if necessary, uh, our deputies, I like to call them our homeless officers, um, they will transport them uh, where they wanna go, if they wanna go back to being homeless, those kinds of things. And so the purpose in having them here is because there's not things around for them to walk to. And so they will, we will know if they're going to leave. It's not something that's in and out. This is a process of development and training and restoration and rehabilitation. And so that's the process in what we want to do. Now, we're connected with other places and other organizations that are helping, uh, people with mobile showers and mobile things like that that will happen around our county, but it won't happen here. And so here, we'll have, uh, primary care physician here. We will have counseling here. We will have many things that will happen here by these organizations. Okay? This is not a county-funded thing. Uh, there's a lot of talk about political things, and this is not that. This is New Hope Fellowship, and you'll be able to ask questions. I would love you to ask questions because it's easier for me to answer questions. But this is New Hope Fellowship wanting to help our county. We have a track record of helping our county and getting involved in our county, and that's who we are. Okay, so you have questions from there? I close down, and we're, oh, let me just finish a little, a few other things. So the reason for this, obviously, is because of JPO 411. Okay, and things that were put on there that just really weren't true. Uh, we, statements that we were trying to shout something through, it's just not true. We came door to door to many of you and explained this, how long ago? Six weeks? Six or eight weeks ago, and we met with many of you. Uh, and at that point, some said, "Well, this gets ran through. We never know about it." And we said, "That's why we're coming now, to let you know, because we wanna be good neighbors." And, uh, I think it was that very week, somebody showed up at the council meeting, uh, thinking that it was gonna happen. It wasn't. And then I heard that there's no plans in the, in the making, but that's not true. The plans were started a long time ago, but we're waiting because the plans are done. They're with the engineer, uh, they're waiting on TOBOS, as we speak. We wanted to have something drawn up for tonight, uh, but the TOBOS haven't come in yet to the developer. And so we have all that stuff, but it won't go to plan and zoning until those things are done. And so you'll get the letter that you'll, that goes out, there'll be a sign that goes out. All of those things will happen in that order, but this is all because we endeavor to be open way ahead of the game. Not to try to hide things or, uh, push things through. And so those things where people went those things out, it just wasn't accurate information. Okay? All right, Casey, you ready to introduce? All right, Sue Urban.
Good evening. Again, I always want to thank you for being out here. It's a wonderful opportunity. Um, pastime, I'm actually the CEO for Comtree. And Comtree, we will actually celebrate fifty years of service in 2023, which is exciting. So Comtree started as a behavioral health provider. We provide mental health counseling, psychiatry, as well as substance use services. In 2012, Comtree became a federally qualified health center, what we call FQHC. And the way that FQHC gets developed is the federal government needs at county eligible. There are three factors that make Jefferson County ineligible at FQHC. One is the level of poverty in the county. The second are the poor health outcomes of the residents compared to state and national. And the third is the shortage of healthcare providers. So in 2012, we expanded and we added primary care and oral health services. So we have the whole complement of primary care, psychiatry, counseling, and substance use treatment. We have children, adults, and youth that we serve. What we will bring to this property is that spoke of services. So it's important that we have the services here to provide the needs of the individuals experiencing homelessness. They will have primary care. They will have access to counseling. They'll have access to psychiatry. They'll have access to medication assistance and treatment for substance use treatment if needed. They will also have access to oral health. They will have a local dental unit that will be able to come on site. And then for more restored here, they can, they can transfer out. We transported out to our great officer. We have a full dental. So what we're looking at, we kind of talked about this very early, but we can't forget again. We will be kind of redesigned to be the medical center. We will have probably three, uh, physician offices. We'll have counseling here as well as, uh, this is where they will have the local dental. That center will be what we call under scope. That means that it will be recognized by the federal government as a primary care site that is open not only to individuals that are here, but also to the community. I think that's pretty complete. Um, on a side note, I'm very excited. I think we've been working since 2016 with the group around meeting the needs of the homeless. And, um, I, I just can't imagine the challenges they go through. And some of you may be familiar with the work that we did, uh, in 2017 around getting our additional housing for individuals escaping domestic violence. We opened that, um, in October of 2020, and it has been life-changing. And I truly believe that this site here will provide life-changing opportunities to the aggravated services that people here are now. Thank you so much.
Good evening. As Casey had just tweeted earlier, I'm Collette in the state of Arkansas, Jefferson-Greveland Community Action. And our agency has a wide scope of services, just like Comtree. But one of the, um, main things that we will be bringing here to support, um, this center will be our empowerment coaching and skill up programs. And those are for case management. So we work with families to identify what their goals are. Uh, some of them come in, they may have a part-time job. They need a full-time job for their kids. Uh, so we work with them for case management, setting those goals, and then working on plans to achieve those. We also have, um, insurance navigator. So if we get somebody employed, um, they may have to wait a certain amount of time for insurance. So the insurance navigators, we help them go through the marketplace. They can help them apply for Medicaid and other resources. Um, fortunately, we have Comtree, and we have the health department that really help with a lot of the medical needs already. But this will be more long-term before they're getting to get insurance or secure insurance through their employer. We also have, um, our Housing Choice voucher program. And so we have a wide variety of vouchers to help people from rental systems. So once they're ready, they can apply for our housing, uh, waitlist. Um, we have emergency housing vouchers right now. They usually get into basically in a couple of months with those vouchers. Uh, they are limited, uh, but we also have our regular, um, housing program along with the mainstream housing vouchers. In addition to that, we have VASH vouchers, so we work with the VA. So if we have, uh, gentlemen or women that are veterans, they can also apply for that program. Um, we have utility assistance, so once the, the babies find their own place, we can help them. Utility is really just so they can be on their feet. And the programs that we offer are for the families in general. Um, so not only for families that are homeless, but anybody that's ineligible. And, um, we do have, um, health services. We usually, um, see families that are enrolled in our programs, like our BID Start program for, um, children and families. And so that's another support that we will be able to offer. I think that's it. We have a lot of other programs that are ongoing. If you guys are interested in learning more, we can have questions later.
Corporal Drew Cruz of Jefferson County Sheriff's Office. Our agency recently created a homeless outreach program in January of this year. Unfortunately, that's all we do with most time of the year in the county. As far as first responders, there is a need within the county, uh, for, for a location to get any shelter and stuff, especially after hours. Right now, Jefferson County, there's no shelter of any type available. So anytime we run into a subject that's needing shelter or needing assistance, especially after hours, Monday through Friday, eight to four, anytime later than that, we're stuck on depending on San Jose City as the closest venue to be able to help us out. A lot of times, there's, their services close at five o'clock, and there's no way for first responders to deal with that. So within the county, it will be a perfect spot for first responders, many agencies in the county will be going forth for fire EMS, who deal with these people on a regular basis to report first responses.
Collette's in the microphone, please. Claudia Maria with the Jefferson County Health Department. I have a broad health education department. Uh, what the health department is prepared to do here is provide barriers and access to the care that we can provide in the health environment. So looking at some kind of a shelter for people who are currently in housing public, we wanna look at emergency preparedness and public health areas. So looking at, can we get everyone updated on immunizations? The last thing we want is to have tents and hardware. So we will come in and work with the agency to make sure immunizations and all those pieces are in place and that everyone here, working with us, is seeing for physical homelessness, that we are taking care of the public immunizations. We also have services available, like a dietitian. So our dietitian can come in. It's a free service, not just for what's going on here, but for anyone in the community, anytime. So looking at homeless, big health for anyone in our community, if there are people here. If we can get their better physical health, we can also aid them in recovery to better mental health. The two are very surrounding, so we have to make sure we're addressing all sides of that. And our, uh, dietitian will be very good and help me to run that piece of this. Um, we also have our family planning clinic. So men or women are needing any kind of sexually transmitted disease testing or education, um, can come in and see our nurse practitioner, and you can make, you can break them access, um, you can barriers to the access to care with our nurse practitioner to a one-day facility. So if they need to, um, look at getting tested, making sure that if they're, and if they're going out to the community, they are educated on family planning, making sure that they're living their life the way that they're choosing the way of their lives and that they have the understanding of the choices that are available to them. Um, our agency by and large does a lot of education, and so we are prepared to come out and provide education on things like smoking cessation, um, trying to get members of our community a better physical health to be able to mental health so that when they transition out of the facility, they now have the opportunity to have a better and more equitable life with the members of our community. Um, there's a lot of things that we do also through vital records. So assisting them, one thing that's an access, or area to access is, uh, getting birth certificates. If you can't get a job, you have birth certificate. So we can help the agency work through getting birth certificates for people here, um, that are coming in and staying here. That allows them to start the process of getting a job. Um, we have all kinds of information available. You'll all be able to talk to us afterwards.
Julia here. Guys, I'm on the bench discussing the Jefferson County Health Department right now. I have to manage the Jefferson County Children's Prevention Coalition with the task force in the county. So, um, with me making sure people are connected with the resources, um, we're already doing a lot out of the community, whether it's, you know, partnering with all these people are talking. We're out at pre-distribution events, we're connecting people, we're talking with them. There's so much need right now, especially with the economy, um, you know, families that are displaced and just, it is a little extra. And, um, so we are, so I'm very excited that with a space like this, and give them the opportunity to really find out what their needs are, give them the help so that they can be productive members of this society back out there, so.
I am, uh, Steve May. I am the co-chair of Axios Counseling, a coaching consultant. The opportunity to consider being part of this project, and I'm very grateful. I've run a private practice out of New Hope Fellowship for roughly the last three and a half years. Practiced for almost twenty years, uh, have always had practical students and intern students from Missouri Baptist, come to seminary, a variety of places, ERUs that offer counseling. So I've overseen those students for the majority of my career. We probably had four to six practical internship students when we got the people over the dance and we were in the fellowship, we're still over there. Uh, they see the community for free, and we've seen a lot of people. And so all the students that I have over there have to offer their services for free at this point to everyone who comes to the door, and that's anyone and everyone. That's something that's been in my heart, to be able to offer for the whole time I've practiced and I've done in a variety of different contexts. I was pastor of Pastor Old Care and Pastor Old Counseling at Christ Community Hotel in Chertis, South County for ten years, not only did the ministerial stuff, but also were handling all the care related things, okay? Uh, I am excited about all this tremendously. I can tell you, there's not many things that my heart leaps over. But when they talk about combining all these services, and many of you, I've heard about for years, referred people to you for years. Everyone that's gotten up so far has done nothing but put a smile on my face. I think this is a beautiful thing for us all to contribute to, to help the community to become stronger and become independent. That's probably about it.
I don't have a lot to say. I'm actually with the development team, and right now, everything's just visions and sketches and the design process, trying to make everything from the light that I've had before. Um, one thing I can add is our very first meeting at this property, we walked through it, and I would tell you that, um, the vision behind it, the first thing they said was, "How can we make the neighbors feel comfortable? How can we make the neighbors feel safe? What do we need to build, or what do we need to do to make that possible?" So our whole plan, we're gonna just set it out of mind. If you have any questions, Bob was going up. We don't really know exactly yet, but plans are in works, and once we know, we'll know.
Stan, I'm gonna clean.
Um, so I'm Nicole Long, I'm the Community Services Program Director for East Missouri Action Agency. And on January third of this year, we opened a seventy-two-bed shelter in Farmington, Missouri. Um, we started off with two, um, shipping container individual one-bed units, um, last summer, and that morphed into the sixty-two-bed shelter that we have today. Um, so I've been doing a lot of talking with Pastor Dan and Casey and the group of people that you just saw talk to you about the work that they're doing and how we've been operating our shelter down there in Farmington. Um, when we opened, we had a lot of support, and I will tell you this, the shelter does not operate without our community. We cannot do the work that we're doing or serve the people that we're serving without all the organizations that are at the table. So very similarly to what the group here is trying to work on, we have a federally qualified health center that comes in and works with our clients, and they provide, um, healthcare services, mental health services. We have, um, practical students who come in and provide counseling services right there on site to our clients. Um, our health department will come over and do shots and help us get records and, um, help us with birth certificates. How many of you, um, have ever not had your driver's license or birth certificate? Do you know how hard it is to get a job if you don't have those things? Do you know how hard it is to get a job if you don't have those things? And so at the shelter, we do that. We take them, we go over, we help them find their records, we help them get their birth certificates, we help them get their driver's license. Um, one thing I will tell you that breaks my heart every time I hear somebody say, well, just go get a job. And you can't just go and get a job. If you haven't slept well, if you smell because you didn't have a shower, if, um, like I said, you don't have that identification, you can't walk in somewhere and get a job. If you don't have transportation, if you don't have any of those things. And so this is so much more than just a roof over somebody's head. Um, the model that we use is, um, wraparound case services. So when somebody comes into our facility, we do a matrix of reading where they are when they walk in, and based on that matrix, is how their caseworker starts to work with them. So some people may have had a house fire last night, and had nowhere else to go, they didn't pay their renters insurance, and now they have to start from scratch. We have people who come in, and they're ready to take those steps, and not, um, be on drugs or be dependent on alcohol, and they need help getting connected to those services. Um, again, we're very lucky, we have, um, PJ, PJC and CMO Behavioral Health, both who work with addiction and mental health. Um, and so it's not just our resources, it's our community's resources as well. When they go through that program, it's typically a ninety-day program, that's our goal, but if they're working towards goals with us, and they're making progress, and their numbers are changing on that rating matrix, then we'll take additional steps to let them stay, because everybody has a different path, everybody has a different journey. My journey is not the same as yours, and my access to, um, to resources, or to schooling, or to whatever that might be, is not as equal as somebody else's. And so, um, you know, like I said, we're a community action agency, so Poli over here, many of the resources that we provide to our clients, Poli will be providing to the clients here, um, it's not going to be set up exactly the same, because we're not cookie-cutter, um, neighborhoods. We're different, our counties are different, the people that we serve are different. But I will tell you, um, and I'm not ashamed to admit this, and so I will just tell you right now, that I used to drive up here, all the way from northern Missouri to the South Cities YMCA, and I saw people every day on the side of the highway who were homeless. And I worked with people who made scholarships for daycare, or scholarships to send their kids to camp. Um, but I did not know how many people who were homeless in my own community until I started this work. And it is so easy every day to just drive by that person and not know their story, but each one of them has a story, and each one of them needs an opportunity for somebody to just believe in them. Now, um, we are a low barrier shelter, so that will be a little bit different, um, but for us, we, um, do a background check on casemate for every client who walks in, every client who walks in the door. Um, we also have our local police force who works with us. If we need them, we call them, they're there. Our local EMS, where we're located, is right across the road. Sometimes it takes them less than thirty seconds to get the ambulance over to us, um, and we have tried to do that, because we have people who have not had access to medical care for so long, that by the time they have an opportunity to be sheltered, to have a place to come, it may be too late. Some of them have found out that they have cancer, or their cancer is advanced further than they thought, and they need those medical services. Um, they signed an agreement, that when they come in, these are the things they have to agree to, and if they can't do that, if they can't follow the rules, then that's grounds for dismissing them. We do have a process where, um, we might be doing what we call write-ups. Sounds like you're back in school. But, uh, if, for instance, um, they don't come back on time at night, because we require them to be back by ten P.M., um, then we'll have a discussion about that, we'll find out what happens. Um, I will tell you that in the last three months, in, uh, let's see, this is August, right? Summer's fine for me, guys. So the hard relief September is about two days away. Um, in July and June, we housed seven people permanently out of our, um, we had around sixty residents in the last two months, right? Yeah, just about. And then maybe housed nine. So when I say permanently housed, I mean that we got them into, um, a low-income apartment. We, um, helped them get a voucher through our public housing authority, so that's what Poli's organization would do. Um, we got them into a residential care facility if they were unable to care for themselves at this stage in life. Um, and some of them, we were lucky enough to reunite with their family. Um, and those stories and those times are powerful, watching somebody have a roof over their head again is powerful. And so I would just encourage you that it is nerve-wracking, because the media portrayal of homelessness, um, is not what homelessness always looks like. There could be somebody in this room who's homeless and you don't even know it right this minute, and frankly, it could be any one of us tomorrow who doesn't have a home. And so the work that they're trying to do here, while I understand that it is scary and nerve-wracking, and it brings some fear to the table, I can also tell you that if I were to walk into that shelter tonight, and somebody tried to try something, I know that I'd have at least thirty residents on my back, because they're going to come and make sure that everything is okay. We do as well, um, I think we talked about with case law, I think I know, um, we have two staff at all times, um, so there's never just one person on the property. Um, we also have security there from six P.M. until midnight, um, so there's lots of different ways that you can go about opening a shelter, um, and they're going to do what works for their community and what works for their program, but I can tell you that they are doing their diligence in their research, they're looking at different operations, different places, um, what, um, kind of rules and guidelines do they have, who do they let into the, into the program, et cetera. So I don't know if I talked over two or three minutes, but, um, I really just encourage you to listen to what they have to say, because they really are trying to change people's lives.
Thank you so much. Okay, do we have another microphone for questions? And again, when you ask a question, please make sure that you speak right into the microphone, so that the camera can pick it up. Okay, questions, who's got them?
You might want to start, I don't know. I have several, so can we not ask more than one?
Uh, raise your hand, if you have a question.
Will you stand till we can see?
My first question is that, uh, the people of Johnson County Community Action Board and different agencies mentioned how they hope families, I just want to verify you say this or that, because they will be involved.
That is correct, we will have, we will have-
Just individuals.
Yeah, just individuals here, we have another location in Orleans that we can send families to.
Are you limiting your questions, because I have many, but I want to give everyone a chance to talk.
Um, not limiting, okay.
Are you having another question for the shares?
Yes.
So you started this program, I mean, obviously based on a need.
Oh, okay, if the whole panel can come to the front.
Okay, go ahead and share your question again.
Okay, so you started your study, obviously based on a, you know, brand of, now in your six months, how many, um, of these people did you contact who are homeless in Jersey?
So in the first six months of the program, we had over two hundred referrals from different organizations, citizens and fellow in the county. All those two hundred referrals were contacted, sixty-four people that were legitimately homeless in the aspect of living in a car, they attend the woods, sitting in the woods, and that aspect.
Okay, so-
It's a large number, there's a large number of that, but that's the core of the county.
So it's sixty-four in six months.
Yes, and then the past two months, we added another additional twenty. Um, temperature changes, we noticed it kind of tends to fluctuate, and it causes a influx of people.
Did you include in your study how many of them are willing or wanting, um, to have, you know, supporting programs?
So of those sixty-four, there was three individuals that we were able to know from living in the elements, to being in a public, or in the trench, we didn't have a problem. Um, it's hard to quantify exactly where to help, because at some point in time, all sixty-four of them, some type of help from us or other organizations, whether they followed through on a long-term plan of that, we don't have a way of tracking, because it's listening to guidelines, to agencies, what they can inform to the actors, so we're able to follow them.
Right, because I know that someone had mentioned that, you know, we know that this is going to be determined that they actually want to not be homeless. And it's going to be, as I understood, faith-based?
True.
Okay, so is that going to be part of the rules and regulations if they don't participate in the Bible?
Absolutely.
Okay, and how do you prepare to handle that, if they decide, you don't want to do this no more? And they just decide to walk out?
They would rather not walk out. Security gate will be there just as much for them as it is for everyone outside. Um, I can tell you that if someone says, hey, this is no longer for me, let us, where would you like to go? Let us give you a ride.
Okay, well, that's another one.
He was next.
Anybody on this side you can, if you'd like to, grab the mic.
Um, you said that you wouldn't be getting funding from the county, where will the funding come from?
So the county is not paying for this, we are, uh, putting in for grants and things like that. So we haven't received anything, we haven't received any approvals, the purchase of the property would be with us. We have applied for grants, uh, one of them is a part of the ARPA funding, it hasn't been approved, uh, Jefferson Frank, Jefferson Foundation, uh, and there's other, uh, grants and things like that, uh, that we can apply for, uh, but this isn't a county, um, a county-run thing that they are putting in their budget.
But currently, where are the funds? I mean, is your church going to-
Our church is going to purchase the property, our funds.
And you have the funds?
We have, we can purchase the property.
You, you have the funds?
Yeah, I can, I, that's where our members, but we're going to purchase the property, so I don't know.
Well, I'm finding why I'm asking, is because my concern is, if the grants all go away tomorrow, which they do sometimes when things change, the grants go away too, or sometimes they're just a temporary. If they're all gone, what happens to this property? How is it supported?
So I actually, we are actually bringing the grant writer into our network, and he can continue, there will be no into it, there will be no into grants.
Well, there are beginning grants, you can't say there's a never-ending, there's never-ending grants.
So our fund-
And other people will be competing for the same grants, and so if someone else gets them, you don't.
So I don't know, but you have-
What's your backup plan if you don't get a grant?
Um, so I, I start with this, so the guy that I brought into the circle, the grant writer, um, he already is speaking with credit numbers.
But that's if-if. What I want to know is, if none of this happens, is your church going to be on the hook for whatever happens here in funding it?
Yes, absolutely.
How many members do you have?
Absolutely, what does that matter? I'm not trying to be mean.
No, no, it does matter to me, because I want, if I was going to finance something, the bank or whoever it was that was going to help me, they would go all through my finances to make sure that I was going to be able to actually do what I have said I was going to do.
That's correct.
So that's why I'm asking these questions.
The banks would, but the people who attend the bank would not.
The people who attend the bank?
The people who go to the bank would not go through your finances, only the bank.
So I'm somebody that just goes to a bank, I'm not a neighbor anymore?
Right.
You're just kidding. My, my other question is, you're, you're, is this going to be a faith-based program?
We said yes.
Then why are you, why are you partnering, partnering with people that are going to receive federal fundings where you can't be faith-based?
Well, because our, our belief is that we need to be a community.
But a community is not a church. If it's a church program, why are we taking, why, why would we have a federal government or a federal program telling us, no, we will go and firmly recognize every gender, all one hundred and some, we don't recognize a man and a woman, and no, we can't talk about Jesus in counseling, because we're not a church. And that doesn't seem, that seems incruent with it being a faith-based program, I mean.
So I guess my question would be to you, is the decision whether you want us to be here or to not because we're a church?
No.
Okay, so let's-
It's because of all, all, the fact that you're not being very transparent, you're saying, if we get a grant, and when we get a grant, and now we have a grant writer that we just brought on, that's not really transparent.
I didn't say if, I said we're purchasing the property.
And then you told me that I was supposed to bank in fifty, and it didn't matter how many people you have going to your turn.
According to our, you can see that, you can come and visit anytime, it's on Facebook.
I, I know, it's two hundred and fifty, that's why I, I questioned, because I wanted to see if you were going to admit it, and you wouldn't, that was one less grant's care to add.
Okay, you, so you can attack?
I'm not attacking you, I asked the question, you attacked me, actually.
Okay, so, so your point, your point is what?
My point is, win the grants or hit the grants, by, uh, what are the finances that are going to continue to support this property, so it doesn't get run down like it is now, again?
New Hope Fellowship.
And, New Hope Fellowship, and you have the ability?
We do.
Okay, then, can I ask you what your annual revenue is? No.
That's in our bylaws, that's members-only.
Members-only?
It is open at our annual receipt. I think we're good for you.
Not really, no.
You have another question?
Yeah, my next question would be, the lady that was talking about her homeless shelter said that she knew that if she had a problem with one, that the two of them that weren't there, there would also be thirty other people that are back. Now that concerns me, how many people are going to be here full-time?
Okay, so, we have, uh, security, um, we have hired security from ten P.M. to six A.M., be no less than two people here at all times.
No less than two.
No less than two, be more people, plus a security, but there will be more people during the day.
Okay, um, the lady from commentary, how do you feel about working with a faith-based program? Are you allowed to say Jesus saves, or there's a consequence to sin?
We provide services to people in need, regardless of the faith that they do.
I didn't ask that question, I asked, are you comfortable with presenting a faith-based counseling program, and are you allowed to do that by federal, when you receive federal funds?
It's a relevant question, we provide therapy, we provide medical care, and then it's provided by people who are licensed, if that's not faith-based, or it's in a system of living, it's in the jails, setting does not matter, we provide services, we provide counseling, we provide medical care, we provide oral health.
Do you agree, do you agree that if it's a faith-based program, that sin is something that should be addressed?
That's a relevant question.
Well, listen, if it's a faith-based program, and you're providing a faith-based counselor-
I'm a provider of primary care, oral health, mental health, and psychiatry. Those are just a busy, busy service.
What, can you tell me, what is a woman?
We will require those, those things, and we're going to move on to the next one.
I don't think so.
Thank you.
So will this be incorporated under your church, or will it be your third-party corporations?
It'll be, uh, a separate, but a part of, because of grants and things, it'll be a little outreach center.
Okay, so then I will follow up with, with that, so as you go along in your plans, whatever reason, you guys, I support your goal, I think it's an ambitious goal, there's not a lot in the plans right now, it could go wrong. It could. And the question would be, is, if it does go wrong, you guys follow the corporation and leave a home for them. And so the question is, will you guys be willing to identify and take the liability for any of our property entries, or anything that would come from the shelter being here?
So we talked to the councilman over this area, we talked to him about putting some things in, uh, that should something change, uh, you know, because he was concerned about special use or conditional use permit, I think, which is where the property is now, that's not what we're looking for, uh, because of the conditional use permit, um, and that's why we're bringing this out, because it could have been pushed, honestly, it could have been done with the permit we have, but we're not, I'm sorry to some opinions, we're not trying to be obstinate, we're unclear.
Not according to the zoning.
Okay.
Not kidding.
All right.
Um, no, no, my question though was, would you be willing to identify as a good neighbor in writing, or risk for property- Or risk for a property held, say, if you, if somebody gets on a property and hurts somebody, and then we end up in a lawsuit? Would you be willing to identify us in writing?
I, you know, I can't answer that right now because I.
No, he ain't willing to do that.
I'm not. Okay. I'm, I'm sorry to put your hands up, but I'm just telling you, it's very transparent. You're not, somebody, he got it. And so, my point is, we want to be good neighbors. And in my heart, I believe that if there was a problem, what we've done in our other places is we've taken care of our neighbors. You know, we, you know, we're not, we're not trying to be, uh, terrible people that.
No, no, I'm not saying.
I know you're not. But, so, I just have to get counsel on that because I don't know that either. I don't know, I don't know if we can do that. You know what I mean? I don't know how that works.
Yeah, but the problem with this is, if something does happen, you have to understand, I love, we want to be good neighbors, but you have to understand, we're holding a hundred percent of the risk.
And, and I totally, and I, and I am not against you with that. And I don't disagree with you. Uh, right now, there are drugs that are happening on this property right now. There are people coming on this property. There's bad activity that's happening right here all the time.
Yeah, and it's, it's not a very far high to move by, do what's.
Right next to.
I worry about the location as well because that's a real busy intersection. And the property is really expensive, and I kinda also wanna know, um, why other properties was looking. There's cheaper properties in there.
Well, we did look at other properties. Uh, we and I talked about the one in Cedarville. We did look at other properties. We felt like this was a good place, honestly, because the majority of the properties back up to this property. I mean, we, we thought about what the neighbors would think. And the majority of the properties, their homes are at the other end, and there's a lot of woods in between. They're back, you know? Okay, so we're. I'm a hundred twenty feet. I am a hundred twenty feet. I didn't set off. I didn't set off.
So, that actually makes me more concerned. Yeah, because we bought up ten acres we was going to build, COVID had convinced us to build. We bought up to the back. I'm not there very often. And where we bought up, that's pretty remote, actually. In the middle, we know there's a lot of people around, that's pretty remote. My bigger thing is a tent city or something forming there. And they could, like you said, we'd be there a long time and just increasing the risk.
Yeah, so, and that could happen if we're not here. If we are here, this isn't gonna be a tent city.
This isn't gonna be a tent city. We're not here.
We're not gonna have tents. We're not gonna have those things. We're gonna allow eighteen men and eighteen women.
But, but it's not here now. So, you can't say if they're not here, it's not, it's going to be here. It's, didn't understand what that's saying. Okay, you said if you didn't come in, that would happen.
I said it could happen.
Could happen, but it's not happening now.
No.
The risk of that happening is greater would bring the same.
Well, actually, most homeless places are behind Wal-Mart's. They're behind places that have facilities. They're not out in the middle of nowhere. Um, they're mostly by towns. They're by Wal-Mart's, they're by other facilities, so they can get to places. They're usually not out unless they're in a park or by a river. Uh, most places in our research is, actually, most of them are by Wal-Mart's. You go, you can go, uh, Dr. Kloski started Comtry many years ago. He was at the Gatschamania, I imagine you were there. Uh, he said homelessness in Jefferson County is invisible. There's so many of them that we don't see.
And, uh, no, that was just the point, that, that we're taking the risk. And I was wondering, as good neighbors, and I, I really don't know if I'm willing to take the, you know, you know, no, I mean, I, I support your effort. I might be willing to take the risk, but it tells a law. To me, as a neighbor, if you guys say no, we take that risk.
Yeah, well, I think we have a risk. I just don't, I, I don't wanna speak to it because everybody's thinking what I'm saying and, and run in different directions.
No, the risk, the risk is, like I said, this is gonna be a separate corporation from the church. All you guys have to do is change its name or fold it up. And it's still, still here, and then we're.
Yeah, so, what I, what I was talking about when I talked to the councilman, that we would put something, if we can, again, this is, you know, this is all stuff that I don't know about, uh, on these particular things. And, uh, Councilman Grodick, uh, talked about it, and he said, you know, you leave, it can become a surer treatment plan because of the conditional use permit. Right? And so, I said, if we can end the paperwork, I'm good. If it's possible to try to put something in that paperwork.
I'm, I'm not worried about, like, the leaving and the vacancy, and it's, it's likely to be in our area if you're not able to control it or set it. And, um, like I said, totally support what you're doing, but we're taking the risk. We run a risk of using more property values than most people are putting in this themselves. And, and that.
Mr. Kloski got a pretty good argument on the inclusion of property values. There is a report back there, uh, that, that says property values do go down in the first year, uh, and then they start to come back up. That's a, that, you can find studies probably for anything. I just want you to know that is there. We did also talk to neighbors. Did we talk to you guys in person?
No, no, our house isn't there. We just don't.
Oh, okay. So, well, when we talked to the neighbors, the ones that we were able to talk to for a little bit, uh, we talked to the people that, I don't know if they're. The Gramps, maybe we talked to the Gramps. And, uh, we said, you know, what would you like? A privacy fence or a chain link fence? What would you like? And so, we tried to talk to neighbors, say, hey, we will help. We will do the best we can do to get this property taken care of. Okay?
They're the ones that rent us.
So, are you planning on going all the way back? You gonna keep it on the front?
And we planned to, we planned to fence the whole thing. The whole thing. There, the, 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 uh, topograph, the, the topos haven't been done yet. We're waiting on those. There's not a lot of availability, um, you know, in part of that. So.
Okay. Um, that affects, so you're building all the way to the back?
No, no, there's, we're looking at a building right here and a building right here. For, one for the men, one for the.
We just bring a lot more neighborhooded in play.
Yeah, I understand. And that's why we try to build all of them. And I don't wanna say you're like, you're like, but I have.
You agree.
I have a relationship. Thank you.
Can I ask, I just, you brought the Gramps, and I really wanna ask you about that.
Pardon?
You said the Gramps over here, you spoke to them about the property. And they're right, you can see their building, their house right there.
Their what?
Their houses, literally, you can see it from here, right?
Yeah.
And I think I spoke, when I spoke to Casey, she had said that, um, they were backing it, and we're okay with the fencing. How did you guys decide who to contact, just by knocking on doors? Because that's a rental. And this is Mr. Graham. He actually owns that house, and he.
Oh, yeah?
He can speak for himself.
No, I argue Mr. Graham.
Right. So, how did you determine rental versus actual owners?
They're not backing.
Okay, so are you the one I talked to on the phone?
No.
Okay, so you don't own that one?
He owns it.
I own it.
You own it, but the people who live there don't.
Right.
Okay, I'm so sorry. We knocked on the door, and that's the people that came to the door. And so, we assumed they were the owners.
So, that's what, that's why I was curious how you, you know, decided who to contact and who to mail your letters to, because, you know, there could be, there's a couple of them that, they're rentals. And I, you know, they should have an opinion, they can up and move. This is, you know, an investment.
Who'd have thought of the, of the rentals, you know?
And that, that problem is very.
I'm not opposed to it. I understand. We, we thought we were doing our deal, doing deals. We thought, because we looked at it, we looked at the property, we looked at the map. We said, let's go here, this is Graham's, you know?
Because according to the Jefferson County deed, it's in his name, not theirs.
Right, and so that's how we saw it. So, but, but we thought they were the Gramps. And I never saw him in person. He talked to me from his camera on the phone line.
And the wife.
And the wife was there. So, yeah, thanks for clarifying.
Just thought you should meet him. Is that it?
Yeah, no, that's great.
Yeah. He's the one you, yeah, you'll have to talk about all of that.
Absolutely. Okay? Um, right there.
Hi, I'm Sarah Summerscape, the president and CEO of Ponifer. Um, we've been the neighbor of this area for forty-five-plus years. Um, we also own this property right at the front now. We've heard of the next step for life. Um, thank you for holding this event. Uh, but I do have a lot of questions, so I'm just gonna ask it to you and give people, um, because this was the first that you were informed of the property you received. Um, you did mention just earlier about the location. And when you brought up, you mentioned that typically, these are located in more urban areas than typically closer. So, what are the plans for transportation? Um, because I can speak to the significant barriers that we have with transportation. We serve twelve hundred people in this county. Um, and I can say right now, we have a waitlist of about three hundred just for those we serve. Um, I certainly think the project is worthwhile. I certainly think the, the services and wraparound and collaboration is very positive. We collaborate with many of these same partners. Um, but I do have concerns about the access for people to be successful. Ultimately, I would want your project to be successful, to be a good neighbor. And knowing the barriers that we currently face, um, the barriers with staffing, the barriers with transportation, the barriers with access to services, medical care, dental, we have those same barriers. So, given that, my first question is transportation and employment. I didn't hear anybody speak about employment.
Okay, so to transportation, uh, we have a list somewhere of Jeffco Express that goes through here multiple times a day in that schedule. But we will have two vehicles on site. We're not talking about twelve hundred like you have. Uh, we're gonna have a party game.
You can have both of you.
So, that would be, those are the services coming here for most of those things. And if someone wants to leave, leave, then the deputies or us would take them away from the property. Like, if they said, we don't wanna be here anymore.
Sure.
We will leave.
Is the goal, though, in terms of transitional, I understand the definition of transitional, that it's temporary, and you're helping them get off their feet and get. So, then, in terms of employment access, are you going to have enough transportation to assist people in accessing employment and ultimately to help them be successful? And what does that look like?
Yeah, so actually, we are working also, um, with other groups to help with transportation. Uh, even in some areas, we're trying to work with some things to help, I mean, we haven't solved that part yet. But for here, we have people who, uh, who can do the transportation. You know, it's not all figured out because we're not all there yet. Uh, we do have two vehicles, we have those things we've tried. And I'm, uh, we did talk to, um, I don't know, but Next Step for Life, uh, a few months ago. So, and they did tell us that there was, that was changing hands. Um, and so, we will be working with them, but it is a program, uh, to try to get them employment. And then we'll go from there. But we will have transportation. Right now, we have two vehicles, um, and we'll have people that are paid to do that.
And, um, I think I heard earlier that you mentioned, uh, with, sorry, um, we'll be the executive director. So, what has been the experience of your organization? Will this be the first transitional housing that you run? What, what's the experience of that?
Yes, Sam, absolutely. Me and Jesus. No, I'm just, I'm messing with you. I, I, as I mentioned earlier, I was the free labor. Uh, I've just been, I've spent a great deal of time in Kansas City. I did a lot of volunteering. Um, I've always been the free labor. I've always been out places, willing to see, willing to help. Um, when, when I was at a church and homeless people would come in, I was the person that they called. And I would just point eight to point B, do what needed to be done.
And this is a question, I guess, for Officer Drew. Um, statistically, where's the largest need come from in the county? So, when you're receiving calls, is there one area, like the northern part of the county, Arnold? Southern part, Festus? In terms of the need, where do you see that, or is it?
Calls for services we receive, it's been spread throughout the county, early and really. Um, also, there've been larger organizations that are coordinating now. And like, as I mentioned earlier, you normally see a congregation behind your Wal-Mart's or facilities, twenty-four-hour access, where they can stay dry, cold, warm, things like that. Major highways. I'll tell you, I've found one of the most urban camps we've found, since I'm three miles from here, that go in and turn, probably, or out. They're down multiple times. We get to contact the person who we do, if somebody comes from, goes from the county. So, in central legislation of the county, this is about midpoint. I mean, a lot of people that we deal with, they've got, are trying to receive services from those boroughs, or they come, like I said, through the major urban areas. Um, Festus, Peabody, Arnold. There's a large group behind the ridge, and the Cedar Falls.
And then I, I have lots of questions, but I'll ask this last one. What is the criteria for admission? I know someone spoke to what's happening in Farmington. Um, and then what's the plans for, um, calling in this day? And I know she mentioned what's the plans for this.
Absolutely. So, again, we have been working with multiple agencies trying to develop this because ultimately, we can learn about what everyone else is doing, but then we take that, we need to make that fit in Jefferson County. First thing I wanna say, though, is we are not gonna go to Wal-Mart and seek out people to bring here. I wanna make that really clear, because I know we keep talking a lot about that. We're not going out, like, gonna be like, hey, if you're homeless, hop in. That's not what's happening here. So, I, I just wanna clear that up right off the bat. But we will have admission standards. Everybody will be background checked. We will not allow sexual offenders on property. That is the good part about being a church. We can set some of those limitations and some of those boundaries. Um, we will be doing, as Nicole said, we'll be, everybody's gonna get a background check before they get in here. We're not letting anyone on property that's going to be a danger to us or to you. We're gonna do our due diligence upfront as best we possibly can.
Before they arrive to the property.
Before, yeah. If we can do it before they arrive, and that's part of our collaboration with all of these guys. If Drew picks someone up, he has the ability to run that right in his car. So, before anyone would even get here, he can say, Casey, I can vet this person. They're gonna go. I hope that answers what's the question? Forgot. Yeah. Okay. And Steve?
Um, I just have one, one question. You're, all right, sorry.
Okay.
Um, but, so, at one point, you guys were talking about the services, the dental, you know, all of that, and you're like, yeah, would be just for the people that in the facility within. It seemed to kinda like switch to almost like it's going to be forever one ground community. So, I just wanted a little bit of clarification regarding that. Is it going to be just for people that, so the girls can go to the public as well?
Right, if, there will be, there, thank you. No, just as, I think, to talk about, no, those things will be available to sign up or register for, uh, for people in the, in this community or other places that will, that will go through the registration process.
Okay, so how are you guys gonna, if they're, say, in the class, and let's say that you guys.
I was gonna bring in a ton of traffic this way.
Like, if we get over thirty-six people?
If you guys fail, yes, yes. If you guys are, are having people who are living in the community, and having people that are already here homeless, how are you guys going to be able to handle both of those sides?
So, so, the, the, um, the people who will be on site, will, there will be that limit? Are you trying not to the care, to the primary care, those things? Because they won't, they won't be allowed to come and stay here for, or if they schedule an appointment with Comtry, they can do that, like, you could drive here and come to an appointment, or with the health department, if they were doing something. People can schedule and come here, but we wouldn't be adding, uh, homeless people to, to come to those things. Does that make sense? Did I answer your question?
Yeah, one more question.
Okay.
There is a problem behind this, and my worry is, what's your best plan for updating this on your, just in case somebody happens, and decides, oh, I'm gonna go live out there like that. You know, I mean, you own this, that, our house, and that's why, you know, this, how, how we're doing this.
Yeah, so, I think what's been stated is, they're not, they're not gonna stay Yeah, so I think what's been stated is they're not, they're not gonna stay in a place where there's not Walmart and places where they can go. That it's just proven in our county, they're, they're, when they go to migrate to places, they go to communities where there's a Walmart, where there's availability.
Yeah, I, I get that, but what I'm saying is, is there's some people also in my, during years.
I hear there's toilets.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. I'm, I'm not saying, I, I'm just, I support it.
What I'm asking is, is there a plan that maybe you have some, you know, security guard or maybe an extra officer running through every now and then, or something like that.
Yeah, is there a place to go back there? Like, is there a road on the other side or?
They just really don't walk. That's, that's really what my concern was, is this whole area.
It connects to all of the houses.
Yeah, so we will know who's here. Um, if somebody comes that's not supposed to be here, they would be trespassing, so they would be removed.
Is there going to be security cameras in place?
Right there, Mike.
Is there going to be security cameras in place that you guys can track who is where at all times?
We will have security cameras.
Sounds like a deterrent.
Over here, is there somebody here?
Hey, sir, hold it before you hang it off. What is your name? Because I'd like to talk to you more about that.
Tyler.
Tyler, okay.
Of course.
Okay. I just wanna make sure I got this clear. So it's a homeless shelter. No? Okay, so it's helping people get back on their feet.
That's correct.
But then separate from that, we have like an open clinic, correct? For the help from Comtry, so how many parking spaces will you have? It's not just gonna be thirty-six people on this property. There could be a hundred and fifty people on this property at all times. And let's say they're coming for substance abuse. Let's just assume. Um, who's to say, you're filled up, where are they gonna go? Are they going out there to die? Where are they going?
So when it's open, what that means is it's open for you to come.
Okay, me, but I'm not on substance abuse, but so somebody comes, nobody's on Comtry.
Or, I mean, there, we've talked to people in this community that have family that's, that are on substance abuse issues. So if they wanted to participate with that, what we're saying, what we're trying to say is things are gonna be available to people here, but it's not, we're not gonna bus in seventy-five people.
But it is their draw, because you may draw some substance abuse to this area that's not, I mean, they're, it's here, but it's not as, as prevalent because now you've got Comtry working hours for dental and things like that. Are you saying, and then there's a bus that's gonna take them back over to Walmart?
No, we're not picking people up from Walmart.
No, I'm gonna tell you, they're getting over here to go to Comtry and to get some of this help. It's gonna be offered here, which is great. But I'm saying, if they can't get back, or they're looking for a sandwich or whatever, are you not gonna create this community full of, you know, some people trying to get, you know, a shot for shingles or something?
Yeah, so Comtry has a lot of places for services.
So Comtry currently has eleven locations, correct, Jefferson County? This would be another location that follows the exact same. You call central admissions, you get an appointment, you're scheduled for an appointment. Um, the riders are on site, they come, they need. But we are not going out driving, picking up individuals from homeless that are struggling there. But it is a health center that is located here for access to care. So those individuals may be residents that live here in this transitional housing. Many will be also from the community. It's simply an access point, and it will go through all of the same procedures that we have for scheduling appointments.
Okay. And then my last question would be about that, uh, nobody's really talked about the housing going down or staying the same and so forth. Um, and you said you have statistics on that? I would like to know what's on.
So here's what I've got back there, and I made it up for every household, if you'd like to grab one. One of them talks about a homeless shelter. This is an apartment that they put up and people go and live, right? There's no limitations on staying there. The other one speaks to a drug treatment center, which we're not gonna be, but drug treat centers are also considered short-term facilities. So we're falling right in between these, okay? So I spoke with a real estate agent this week, and we are gonna be going and visiting. It's called St. Matthew's House, and you can look it up, it's in Naples, Florida. We're gonna go take a tour of that because they're the only facility, well, one of two, well, you know, one of two, the other one's in Michigan, that we can find that are doing what we are doing. A six-month track of getting you back on your feet. Now, I will tell you this, we've already done this successfully out of our church building. We actually had to place this lady in a hotel. Corporal Cruz called us, said, hey, I've got this lady, I need help. We partnered this whole panel that you will see of your partner together. I can tell you that she is now reunited with her son. She is in her own apartment. She is paying her own rent. She has a job, we've been accounting for her, and I just found out this week, she's getting a book published.
That's all.
This is what we're after. This is what we're doing. She, to no fault of her own, no drug use, heard her dad didn't get along, her dad picked her out. That situation, she's living in her car. Corporal Cruz comes across her in her car. These are the kind of things, guys, that we're talking about, okay? So we physically paid her way to stay in the hotel until we can get all these processes in place and going. So this is not new to us. We've been helping the homeless in our building since this building has been there. People walk in off the street, how can we help you? We are getting pretty good at determining who needs help and who doesn't. All right, you with me? But listen, this is what I'm saying. People need help. They're here. And just because you're not seeing them doesn't mean they're not here. We're not after those people who are saying, I don't want help, cause we know there's those people out there. We're after the people just like this young lady who says, hey, no fault of my own, I'm suddenly homeless. Just as someone mentioned earlier, a house fire, like that, you're homeless, right? A natural disaster, like that, you're homeless. I've been homeless. I lived in a camper for almost a month in my brother's driveway. It's not fun, right? And I had a camper, wasn't even a tent, but I'm here to tell you, one person stepping in and saying, I want to help you. I wanna make a difference in your life, goes so, so far to this lady who's now reunited with her five-year-old son. She sent me a text message this week when he started school. Guys, that's why we're doing this. That's why. We're not doing this against you. We wanna be with you on this, so that when we start telling these success stories, it includes all of us. Each and every one of us. Yeah.
I just wanna make the suggestion that you look at the property value to find. You also need to take into account the median property values of the areas, because there's not a lot of places like this that go into areas with, I don't know, the median house is in this area, but it's pretty high. And, and that as well. And that's just what I'm saying, is I don't know if we can find comparable studies or not.
We, we can't, just, we can't find what we're doing. Short-term homeless, it's not out there.
Far what you're doing, I don't think you can probably find very many ser- even similar with property values in this, in, in the range that's around here. And, and like I said, everybody supports what you're trying to do. Everybody wants to help people, but, uh, property owners may be the financial risk.
We're taking the burden of it. That's what we're taking the burden of. Our investment that we put into our property, we're, we're taking the burden of it. We're not saying that we're gonna help people, but we do wanna help people. I'm not saying that we don't wanna help people, cause we do wanna help people, but us as homeowners, you and my husband, you know, thank you for coming up and telling us all this, because we love you. But, you know, we just built this house. This is our, this was our retirement home. So all our money now that we have invested in this house, you build this facility, it's gone. That money out of my pocket. And I know somebody put on Facebook, well, it worked a human life. I worked hard for this property. It's hard, every single week.
And we're not against the need, the need for what you guys are doing. I, I take my hat off, absolutely. Absolutely. Everybody in this room right here would take their hat off for whatever you guys do. Whatever you guys do, we take our hat off to you. But this area right here, there, this area, you've got a subdivision there. You've got a subdivision there.
And what is the school?
This is not a state school. This is not an area for homeless. I am sorry. I live a hundred and twenty feet from that side of this property. I do not want people walking around, doing whatever, and coming into our property. You said there's gonna be a fence. Don't know what they have. What are they gonna throw over the fence? Am I grandkids gonna go out there and play? And they're gonna come up, grandpa, look what I found? No. And Comtry, all you guys, help people. Grant, you put a building in there? A medical building? You said there was gonna be a Comtry here. There'll be setting up things in this building. This sort of, this is gonna be in and out service for all you guys. For the moment. If they walk here, have an appointment, they leave, but they cannot get to those, Walmart, Festus. Where are they gonna go? In my backyard.
Exactly.
I'm not against. I am not against helping the homeless and the drug addicts. I am with you, but the need, it is a need, but not in this area. This area is a residential home area, not a commercial. And I had talked with you and you at my house, and you said, matter of fact, you said, owe the phone to me when I called you. What? No. When I called you, I'll give you a buffer at my kitchen table. What can we do to be neighborly? I said a buffer is that whole baseball field. I can't do that. And you said, you're on four-one-one. Great. I, I, I was on four-one-one when you told me you weren't. No, you see my post. And I just got my phone, and I did comment on four-one-one.
Somebody else though.
Yes. But anyway, you said, we can't talk. Why can't we talk about what you suggested about giving you a buffer? What about all of these people?
I wanna buffer.
Give them buffers.
Right.
I mean, I'm not the only one here. So, so I'm so thankful that you brought it up. Yes, cause you told me that I didn't have to bring it up on four-one-one. You know what, Dan? I brought it up here. That's not what I said. But the fact that you did bring it up answers a lot of questions. Because if you were really against a homeless place being next to your property, there's not a buffer big enough. What you're saying is if you can get some more property, then you don't care about anybody else. No, 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 no. Is that what I said? No, exactly what I said, you twisted my word. Is there a need for this? Yes. I said, if you suggest a buffer, you suggested a buffer, what can you do to be neighborly? And I'll give you a buffer.
Someone needs to like settle him down.
A buffer, you would put space. Then you said, give me the space. Cause I said, a buffer is a football field. And I said, we would put stuff in between. Then you made the statement that you would give, that you wanted us to give you something, right? A big buffer, and it'd be underneath my name. Not yours, because I don't want a building sitting right on a property line, cause in Jefferson County, you gotta be fifty feet from a property line to build.
Doesn't stop at thirty-eight? Doesn't stop, the buildings, doesn't stop at thirty-eight? People being not housed here?
It's thirty-six.
Or thirty-six, I'm sorry, thirty-two. Okay, so doesn't it stop there? Or, and if it's seats, does it just keep growing? And, oh, how many acres was it, twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight acres.
Twenty-eight acres? So we can fill this up with housing?
Not our intention to do that.
How do we know that?
A little.
How do we know that?
What's on your?
How do we know that?
The hard thing is, building a building.
Here's my point, here's my point, here's my point.
I don't wanna walk out, I don't wanna be laying in my pool.
I allow you guys to see.
I know, so hold on, I don't wanna be laying in my pool, looking at back to the building.
Okay, so I offered privacy events at the top of their hill, okay? I offered that. I offered that we take a fence there, we move another fence further away so that there's not people getting close to their property, okay? At that point, I have not offered to give them property, okay? I said, we would put another fence up with trees of whatever, uh, for their seventy-eight feet that they touch the property. Is exactly what I said. And then, we came outside and you said, I want you to give us this property from the dugout all the way over to the shed. This is not the same gift I said. A buffer is all the way to the dugout. That is correct, that's exactly what I said, that is a buffer. Sixteen foot, ain't no buffer. I could throw a soda can that far. Thirty foot, that's still not a buffer. But my point. But my point is this, Dan, where do you live? Do you live next to a homeless shelter? Do you live, you and your wife, when you've been tearing your house out, do you look at the community? Yes, you did. And I guarantee you, all you did, if you have kids and go to school, this is our forever home. And I do not want a homeless shelter here where my property values go down. And.
All of our property.
Yeah, all of our property. And so, and so I appreciate your comment. I do not live by homeless shelter. Correct. Cause you've been in a subdivision property. Or you have five acres or ten acres, I don't care what you have. What did I tell you? I can't remember, Dan. I told you that. I wanna tell me. Thanks. I told you that my daughter and my son-in-law and my two granddaughters that are six and three live fifty feet from a rehabilitation, a drug rehabilitation center. That's your church, right? No, it's not that church, it's connected to the church. But it's, it is connected, but it is not our rehabilitation center, and it's fifty feet building to building from where my granddaughters are. So my wife and I have had over sixty-five people live in our home. I'm not trying to get you to say, hey, you're a great person. I'm a normal Jefferson County, blue collar guy who believes in Jefferson County, and I believe that we should work together. And we all believe in Jefferson County. We all believe in the community that we live in. But your daughter and your son and all your family that live next to that homeless shelter? The homeless shelter was probably our cadaver, they bought it. They did not come. Actually, it wasn't. We denied them, we invited them to come. Now, look at the records. You would deny it though. We did. Okay? They think your property, was that, was that your property that you sold, the homeless shelter? It wasn't. They spent acres of the property.
That was their choice.
They, they offered to sell it to us. Our choice, being neighborly, I'm speaking for everybody. We do know a lot of this here, right?
The first part?
Okay. I think you will, I think you're all safe. Your, your post, go ahead.
What you guys are doing, the, the concept of this is completely honorable. But this location is insane. How would you expect anybody to be able to do this? That, that's not rational.
Well.
I, I'd love to see who suggested this location. How it was suggested, how do you figure out these locations? Do you have a backup location?
Are you done looking then?
So, so here's, here's the, the word that we get, that people say, we love it, but not with my backup.
Oh.
And that's, that's what we get, that's what we get. It's not, I'm, I'm, I'm just being honest, that's what we're saying tonight. There's a need, there's a need for a gas station, there's a need for Comtry, there's a need for Walmart, there's a need for everything. This is not a commercial area. This is a residential area.
That's why they wanna be here, that's what she said.
That they can what?
Needs, whatever they want.
Your, with transportation, that's your microphone. It's like dying, I'm giving up.
Okay. Yeah, all right. All right, so my question was, you said there's a gate, um, property, and then who can leave whatever they want? They decide to start their own, one of the property. A order of the property. Um, so you said they are not allowed to go by foot? And someone has to come, pick them up and take them where they want to go?
Yes.
Well, what if where they want to go is just down the street?
Well, they would, I mean, so talking to Corporal Cruz, if they were gonna, you can hear me, right? Is that?
Yes.
Then they would take them back to fifty-five or, uh, to the camp behind Walmart or, you know, we have, we're not, listen, we are not trying to be these, this.
No, I understand that, but if they were.
We, we want.
If they want, they said, you know what, I don't wanna, this is, I mean, I'm just gonna say, God chuck them up here, whatever. What are their reasons? They said, I can't leave, this is my deal, I don't leave. And the police or whoever, you take them off the property, what are the guidelines as to where, how, how far away do they get to?
They get taken, in my mind, they're gonna get taken back to Walmart or one of those places.
They're not from Walmart.
No, but that's where the camps are. You see what I mean? If they wanna be homeless.
So they're guaranteed to not be dropped off. At Ingram's, yeah, Ingram's.
Oh, absolutely.
Something I say, you can guarantee that.
Yes.
If they say, I wanna go to Ingram's, and I don't know if the officers can tie in.
I think we need a radius, but like a mild radius that they will not be dropped off within, within our.
I would gladly do that. I'd add it to a mile away. We're not gonna do that. We're gonna take them to a place and, you know, that is one of those things.
Now, you're respectful, you go to the bathroom, clean up, or take food.
If they wanna be homeless, they're in those places, they're in all those roles, not that much.
Yeah.
Okay, so my next question is, um, what if they aren't prepared or ready to leave this program at the end of the term? Would they have a job, they don't qualify for a job, they don't, for whatever reason, not to, or anyone happens?
Well, that's, we're gonna, we're gonna, well, I would say there may be some situations, but probably, we're gonna know that in three months, you know, or four months, where if they can't, like if they physically can't get a job, then we don't need to wait six months to know that, so that makes sense.
So, what some of them, okay, so what some of them are.
Are they gonna do another six months, are they gonna just say, your loss, cause?
Start you out and stop you.
A program, like a nursing program, and then you, and then they, they help you. Are these, are these, drop me.
Oh, you can handle it, Mike.
I, I have an etiquette in my family.
Let her continue, let her, let her finish, okay?
I have an etiquette in my family, so it's very close to home, okay? So, and it scares me, because I just wanna know if they have already been through treatment? And now they're coming to your facility for help? And they're on there like ninety days, and they're trying to, you know, because it takes blocks and break, and it's back, or chippy? Or have they already come through treatment, or are they coming through treatment through country? Because I've had several members, I, I've had a member of my family, and I know some other people that went through country? And just failed. Because it takes so long to, first off, get an appointment, then thirty days from now, then now you gotta see a counselor, then you see a ca, uh, case manager, then you see this one. You know, when a drug addict needs help, they need help now, not two hundred days from now. Now you get some other education, and now you get to speak to a counselor.
It's, it's on, it's just turned down.
This will not be a treatment facility, this will be a company by internal or under care. This will not be a treatment facility, um.
But they're not trying, but they're not turning, turning away drug addicts, so. Right, that's all they're doing.
This is not a treatment facility, this is traditional living for individuals who want to get from where they are.
But, if they're not gonna turn away drug addicts, they're gonna have to treat them.
And there will be a, there will be a care that they have to do, and they daily, there will be three rooms.
Hmm.
It's not a community facility. So, so if the, so if they, they, if court are amended, and they come, they, they have to go to a country, is this one of those facilities?
No, this is not, this has no affiliation to any court or any government.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering, because some of them are, right? Some account they have, and they have areas to go, no, this is simply a medical site or access to care. Okay, because we have, we have, we all have a degree, county and court.
And I would say, like, we're connected with, uh, a place that's a twelve month.
They're not gonna turn away drug addicts.
They make a rehabilitation center for drugs.
But, they're saying it's concrete, so, if they're not gonna turn away drug addicts.
No, it's not, their website lies, man, because their website says it's a five hundred dollar fee.
Five hundred dollar fee.
So, that's not free.
I mean, I'm sorry, many times we would cover that for them as a church, we helped them or try to get that, okay? There is a fee, uh, but for twelve months after the fee, okay? See, I mean, be very careful. After the fee of five hundred dollars and zero cents, right? Then, twelve months is free, if it takes them thirteen months, it's free, if it's fourteen months, it's free, right? Then, when they graduate the program, they can come back and stay there and get a job and work part-time there for free for their accord. And then they have an internship, and they have a leadership development, and all of those things.
Yeah, well, that's not free.
Yes.
That's not free, if you're working for it, you're running boys.
It'll be something, we wanna talk to the neighbors, because. Oh, I agree, but some said, some said, well, we don't wanna privacy fence, or we don't wanna chain link fence, those kinds of things. So, we were trying to talk to the neighbors, once you get the woods. Do you live connected though, or are you in the subdivision? Okay, so, we went first, we just went to the homes that were connected.
They were connected and weren't talking to them.
And then this letter went out.
They didn't talk to all the connected people.
All right, we're gonna go to you, I don't think you had a chance, we are timed at eight o'clock, so we're gonna wrap quickly, so we're gonna go to people who haven't spoken. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you for your time, Kitty. So, I understand this is more or less an informational meeting, right? I'm wondering what the next steps in the process are. I understand you would state that there are plans in progress, um, obviously, you've made a lot of connections with partners. But, uh, can you speak a little bit to what you see as the ideal timeline versus the realistic timeline?
So, the, is, is that the engineer, is that the engineer right now? Been there for a long time to us. Uh, when they get the compost ready, they'll finish the stuff, uh, that they need to do, uh, for sewer and all of those things to get it ready to go planning and zoning. Then we get an application, planning and zoning, then it's scheduled for planning and zoning, and everyone, uh, will, I, within a certain distance, you know, how the letters go out for planning and zoning, the sign will go up, then it goes to planning and zoning, once it's to planning and zoning, then it goes to the council. You said you are a legal sewer? Uh, it's a, is it a treatment? It's a whole thing, it's a, it's a, a whole sewage treatment, it's, it's not sewers because they're not here yet, they're coming, but they're not here. Bring it on, how many bedrooms? Uh, I wouldn't have enough for thirty-sixty. Oh, yes, oh, yes, we wouldn't do it, the lagoon that's out here, they cover some, but they can't cover, you know, and so, yeah, no, it's, it's done by the engineers, it's gotta pass everything, and we're giving them all the information, we're not trying to escape.
And that's based on how many you've got, or something?
Uh, so, nine, they gave two people per room, so nine rooms in one building, nine rooms in the other. Okay? We'll oversize it a little bit, but we can't oversize it too much because it won't work correctly.
So, if they're gonna do that, then why'd you say forty units?
Go ahead.
So, it's really eighty people.
Um, okay, so my question is, I mean, you started this meeting, you said that Jefferson County is not funding this? But, um, my mom is so happy, she's always been, you came to our home, and you told my mother that Jefferson County, Dennis Cannon is working directly with you on this, and they have millions and millions of dollars to fund this. So, that's hard.
Okay, what I said was, we have talked to Dennis Cannon, and they have asked us, but this is our thing, we have applied for grants, part of that's our funding, right? We're applying for Jefferson, uh, Jefferson Foundation where we are, there was another one through somewhere else, I don't know. Uh, but Dennis Cannon does not run this or have this, he's the person who directs it, is part of our funding, right? And the council, and that team.
And gets to decide who where the money goes to.
Uh, well, the council decides if we get to do it or.
So, the council, so I suggest that if everybody has an issue with this, that this meeting is informational, nothing more than that. Um, thank you to the two officers for your service, because we appreciate you and everybody else up here. My issue is with Deanna Ross and Michael Pellicia. You change your story depending on who your audience is? And I have a really big issue with that. Um, I suggest that everyone should get involved in our county and go to the county council, where you can show up and let your voice be heard. You guys need to go to the, um, planning and zoning and let your voice be heard, because your voice matters too. And I'm concerned with what their intentions are. Um, and the blue shirt, what's your name?
Casey.
Okay, so you said that there's gonna be no, um, sex offenders here? You can't really say that, because if somebody is being vaccinated or disabled, and they're a pedophile or are a sex offender. No, they don't.
If they've not been caught.
No, they don't.
You win.
So, but that being said.
So, so I can say, but I'm assuming you're the one that put the banner up and the letter out, right?
I didn't put a letter out, I put a banner up.
Okay, so.
I just want the forces to see, everybody.
And that one, that very good, okay? I've seen him release since.
I didn't mention Derek, but I don't know if I would have.
You did open your phone. You said, very good, very good.
I spoke to you on the phone.
Well, on the camera, did you talk to me on the camera?
Yes, I did.
Okay, you said, is this with Derek Wood?
I said, yes, are you working with him on this?
And I said, no.
You said, yes.
Derek Good?
He said, yes.
I said, no, Derek Good. Okay, I'm just trying to say, listen, I, I don't know what I've done, uh, I broke up many things.
I don't know what I've done.
And I'm glad, uh, it was talked about, about, uh, that I'm a business person. I'm sorry, that's a bad thing.
On their eighty-eight year property.
Business person, but why is that a bad thing?
I thought you were pastor.
Well, your pastors have to be business people.
Okay.
So, I mean, I don't know about your pastor, but it's okay to pastor and also be a business person. Those two things don't have to be, neither of those have to be evil. And, and so, you know, we're split up, you know, a lot of those things. I am a business person, I think it helps me, I think it helps doing things like this. Our goal, sole goal, is to help our family.
Since you know where my bear is, are you the one that's stealing all the signs, what completely?
Absolutely not, absolutely not, because I don't, I, and I have a couple people do, so.
Yeah.
I'll hit it one sign and one banner. Those people all, so I'll hit one sign in Festus, that would have my leg, and a subdivision, and then the one on the property.
Okay, I've got a few things, uh, I think everybody here is agreeing that you're trying to reach the homeless people. Um, I have a little bit of concern because I backed up to this property also, you never offered me two fences. You know, you offered another property owner to join this property, that, so I, I've got big feelings for you right now, so, just based on that.
Thank you. We haven't talked about those things, his property, when we did the research, his property wasn't even built up, it was so new, right?
Two years.
Is that true, though? I showed you the picture, I think I did, it wasn't on the, on the thing. Google. Yeah.
Another, another one of my concerns is back, that you've got concrete, you've got all these extra resources coming in here. Uh, there is no way, when you break something, you're dropping off, that we're gonna be able to provide enough transportation because these people act where they belong, if they're not at this location. And they're not staying here, they're, they're.
Okay, so.
These two officers right here, they're way over what it is, way out of the thing, through those two guys, because they've been told in the house.
There's, what Sue Kirkman said, there's eleven locations, there's no reason for somebody in a homeless camp at Walmart to come to this location for services. They're getting limited services.
Where are you getting your homeless from there?
When they come here, if they're buying, whatever they do, they have to.
Where are you getting the homeless from there?
If there's no transportation, I'm gonna act up right here, okay? They're coming through your yard, okay, and I think that's where everybody's at. Okay, would you want them to come through your yard?
No, I don't actually, I wish it were. Because sixty-five people live with me in my married life, we want people to come and live with us. It's, this isn't, this isn't about what I will or wouldn't do.
But these are people who are remarried.
But that's your choice.
I have.
You want your grandkids, you want your, your kids.
That's his choice.
Friends.
I've already said, I'm a big, I'm a big grandson of my two grandkids, I've already said that.
But that's your choice, that's your choice.
Sir, I'm not very impressed with your plan coming across here, especially since you're so many mixed feelings and so many electric questions, being honest.
Yeah.
But that's your choice to live like that, that's not all of our choices.
I understand, I'm sorry.
And you bring up.
That's not our choice to live like that.
I live right up to the ball field there, and I've been there for about forty-nine years. I have trails on my land that my granddaughter, she rides horses on. I've had my neighbors ask me if their grandkids could ride their two, or three wheels on my own, and I said, no. Because I don't wanna be responsible for any accidents.
Right.
Also, the people up here, with the trails I have in my, like, in my field, I mean, in my land there, it's easy for them to walk. I don't want anybody on it, that's mine. I tell people, no, they can't, and you're not gonna tell me that these people up here are gonna go down there, because they will. The ball fields up here, they cut their mark, so they will do that. And you're not gonna tell me you're going to control the people that come in here. You are all Christian people, I'm a Christian, and you can't turn your back on some of these people. Even though you don't have the room, being a Christian, you can't, you will help them, and I think things will get out of hand up here. And I agree with everything, this is a great thing to do, but not here. I don't want nobody on my land. Call me an old green woman, call me a rich one.
You were very kind.
I don't want nobody on my land.
So, what kind of fence can you give me in my backyard?
What I told the person who I told was you, um, was, uh, an eight-foot privacy fence.
Eight?
I understand this, if the county allows it, because I don't know what the codes are, because sometimes they say fences can't be a certain, I, I think they can be eight-foot. And so, I want it zone four, okay, I'm sorry, and all the pens I want is zone four, that's with zone commercial, yes, you can go eight-foot. Okay, that's natural, that's six-foot. Okay, so, so that's.
So, what kind of fence is that?
Will be a privacy fence, so like woods, like a wood, I would do different.
Solid wood?
Yep, yep. Okay?
What, will there be any advertisement or signs, like from Baptist Park, advertising where the shelter is? Or the rehabilitation center?
Oh, like?
Like a sign saying?
Marketing, and marketing advertising.
Just a sign saying what it is? You know, it's gonna say outreach center or anything?
It would say probably new hope outreach center.
Okay.
Wouldn't say homeless.
So, you don't think that?
Wouldn't say homeless.
Right, but once your word of mouth starts, you don't believe that you'll have people being dropped off at your fences in the middle of the night or anything?
So, I, I think that in the very beginning, that that could happen, I really do think that could happen. But what we found is that the camps, even if they're at one place or another place, there's a lot of communication between those camps. And once they find out that they cannot just come in, but what I didn't, if, if you've ever been in the emergency room, you go through like triage.
Right.
You know, well, we plan to do that before they get here, we plan to have a home call, uh, with whoever they, if someone's talking to them, if it's Corporal Cruz or, or somebody else, there will be a home call, there, one of the groups is working on a system, uh, that will give us information immediately, those kinds of things. So, before they ever get here, we will see if they will be a fit or not. So, we don't bring them here and then say, I'm sorry, this isn't for you, leave.
Right, but if someone else brings them.
I do think in the beginning, there will be a few of those, but I think once they leave immediately and they go to somewhere Festus or Arnold or wherever, that word gets out that this isn't a place for them to come.
So, you have no plans of how you'll handle that when it happens?
But, yeah, if it's not necessarily the, the police officers dropping these people off.
No, I understand that, we will, we will take them, they are not, we will not take them off of the street by being dropped off, that's not part of, so, so when people call, I, I think I talked about it, but there, there are all these organizations, Sue, I think you talked about, that there's been this, um, homeless coalition for quite a while. And there are, um, groups that help different areas, there's different churches that help the people who, uh, wanna be homeless, but they need a shower every once in a while, or they need to do laundry, right? So, those would be things we would be able to direct them to. We would say, okay, you don't fit here, but here's what, where you would fit, does that make sense?
You can go down a shelter, you can do that without a big building, and you had stated that it was a forty unit. Yes, you did. You said forty unit, but more explicitly, there was gonna be thirty-two people, eighteen, eighteen. Well, this is why we are so upset, because we want to trust you, this is in our backyards, we want to trust you, right? But you tell us so many different things, everything changes. I, I have put a Bible before me, and I will swear to you, you told me, eight forty units, you remember our phone conversation? How do you know I didn't record that? Forty units, you said.
I wish you played.
You said forty units.
I said, I said, I said, I swear in a house thirty-eight people, I am not gonna tell you that if Corporal Cruz, at negative, come back, at negative, whatever degrees, um, wouldn't bring me somebody and say, Casey, they're gonna freeze to death tonight if you don't let them spend the night.
You're exactly right, you were playing to build a state of the art forty. Your exact words were, you were playing with a state-of-the-art forty unit program developed.
Oh, oh, okay.
Oh, okay, forty units.
We're building.
So what are forty units? Forty individuals, what you said, two people in each unit, so which is it?
Um, we're gonna have thirty-eight beds, let's talk that way.
You didn't say beds.
Thirty-eight beds.
Okay.
Maybe thirty-eight. Thirty-six.
Okay.
So now you're not confused, thirty-six beds.
I'm not confused.
But what I said was that.
We're gonna just.
Somebody, I wouldn't make anybody.
Yeah, totally, cut it off.
That's, that's just what I said.
That's not what you said.
Are you also saying that I was putting sex, things like that?
No.
Are you gonna go through?
And the other thing I'll say about the criminals, the only getting, the people with the records doesn't mean they have to.
Right.
And we can't.
I know, that, I, that's my point, is there's no way you understand.
I understand that, in, 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 uh, Farm, yeah, I'm sorry, forgot where I put, in Farmington, you weren't allowed to get to, we, we, they had other things, but, um, the, uh. People around Farmington are happy with what's there, and, um, you can find, you can research it, okay? All right.
No, we gotta have it, so people can hear it.
The flex in Farmington, is that building in the middle of all the subdivisions like the workers?
No.
Is that the other, that the building with all the subdivisions all around?
There is a subdivision by, well, yeah, each from there, go ahead.
I'm manager of the local center.
If we were the park center? If we always tell them.
There's houses, there's houses, and apartments.
But, are the houses like pet houses, or are they nice, big homes that people would?
And so, the reason is, is we're not looking for the transients that are wanting to go and do other things. We're looking for that group of people that no longer wanna be homeless, so they're gonna stay here, they're gonna be here, they're gonna be rehabilitated, they're gonna be developed, and those things.
Sounds like not a selection.
And, and she said it about Farmington, they have a lower barrier because they're.
Like what people.
They still do the background checks, those things.
The rest of them should not.
They take in people who still are homeless, right, they can, they, that's not, we will feel those calls, but we will put them in other places in the county where they have places for them.
Maybe as well.
Okay, yeah, do you have, do you have a mic over there?
I don't have any, got.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I just wanted to ask, um, about New Hope Fellowship, uh, in High Ridge. Um, as far as I can tell by public record, it's on eleven acres, was that?
It's on eighty.
On eighty?
We were on seventy-seven, and people who sold us the property, he passed away, uh, they sold it to us in June of twenty fifteen. Um, and this is all on our Facebook page, I think, or our website, uh, but then a few years later, uh, his wife said, I wanna move by, by my son. And so she lived on the property, um, on a three-acre tract, so we purchased that from her so she could go live with her son, or buy her son, and so now we went from seventy-seven to eighty.
Okay, so was that considered as a location at all for this location? Or is there a reason why it's not going, because the church is connected, is there a reason why that, it, that area wasn't considered?
Yeah, because it's in that, it's, it's not in the, the part of the county like, like Cedar Hill, when we were looking at Cedar Hill, everybody said, that's in the corner, that's not a good spot in the county. You know, uh, our property in, uh, High Ridge is, you see a valley here, um, we have, it's a hundred and some feet deep of a valley, um, to do that. But more importantly, it's not in a, a location where we could have services like we could have here. I mean, services, I mean, uh, these services, not church services.
They would go there, they would go there? Like, how would they go there?
So we brought them, we brought them to Cedar Hill, we brought them here, and they said, this is a great location.
I'd say if you're, if you're homeless, if you're homeless and you want help, you go anywhere.
Yeah.
Regardless of, you know.
Right.
Same deal, same journey, if you're homeless and you go to want help, you go anywhere.
And you'd think the, the people up here providing the services would go wherever they're needed.
Thank you, church, they supported better, you know, I understand your questions, um, and I knew that, that those would come up, and, and I would be happy to show you our property and, and show you those things.
I mean, looking at the video on your website, it looks like you got lots of flat land.
Uh, that may be based on rehabilitation center is, right, and that is to the property.
My biggest question is, does it stop at?
That's gonna circulate. Festus and.
But they got, they have eighty acres, and they've got two sprinkles there, football seats, all kinds of stuff there.
As it passes and it's successful, does it keep growing, and now we have thirty-six, now we got a hundred, and then we expand to a hundred, you know.
They got that kinda month, they don't. Buns and not come through the grants, like, I don't, dude, that sounds like a lot of.
Mm-hmm.
Or they didn't have as many beds that they have, we do not intend, uh, to grow as they intake for those stakes. Now, I won't, I would say this, that we are wanting to help people, uh, but we would not grow that part of it. But if there was an opportunity that we could have a part, uh, as they go through the process, where we could fence off an area and have women and children where they would be safe, and have a place for them.
There are parts of that.
That's down the road, but listen, it's all gonna be on those lands, because we're not trying to hide anything.
Well, no, yeah, because I remember you saying, Casey, you said that you'd like to do a, a, a women's.
A place for women with children, uh, that's a safe place where they can live.
Yeah, no, our man, we're taking.
It would be more, uh, a place where they live and work, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, no, I'm just kinda wondering, so if those are like your.
We have one, we have one more question here.
Okay, we're not gonna make this our last question.
I mean, I, really, I just wanted to ask if the neighbors being concerned about their property values or the crime and things like that, I mean, I lived in big cities before, and I've been around that kinda stuff. And I, you know, it is, I mean, is our concern actually being heard? I mean, was this considered before purchase or any of purchasing it, because, I mean, if you just do a quick Google search, it's like, immediately, you know, three things pop up that say, what affects property values, you know, it's, homeless shelters. Um, and then a couple other things, I can't remember off the top of my head, but, you know, that's a really big ask, because people do wanna help, and they do wanna help in their communities. But to say, oh, you know, do that because it's the right thing to do, you know, just, just kinda deal with it, like, I don't think that that's very fair, so I was just wondering if that was considered.
Yeah, I mean, I, we've processed these things, and again, I, I'm from this area, you know, um, and, you know, I've had people talk to my dad about it, you know, uh, and, and those things. So this isn't something that's not real to me, and I just think that, that my goal is to get, get something set for the county to be ahead of what's coming. Because what's coming is gonna be far worse than what we have, and, you know, people can, can look at it, and, and I think you all get it, I think you all are sincere in wanting to help. But do you believe there's another subdivision? Do you believe that there's another piece of property where people are gonna go, hey, come on in?
That's why we have zones, that's why we have residential zones and.
Pardon me?
That's why.
No, that was, that's what, wasn't what I asked, I was asking, do you think there's other subdivisions that would say, hey, put a place like this in our subdivision?
No, I think there's, there's plenty of land in Jefferson County that isn't surrounded by residential.
Yeah.
I mean, don't you feel like you have to have a, a zone change, you know, or surrounded by residential, don't you feel like maybe you are within the wrong place?
Well, that's why it's supposed to be planning and zoning.
But you personally don't, you don't feel like you should've been looking in areas that already, you know.
That are already zoned, the right.
But you stopped here and that's it?
No.
Keep looking.
We, I'm not trying to be, we feel like this is a really good place.
It's not.
Right, so they built, so the land is gonna be a New Hope Fellowship name, correct?
That's correct.
So do you have lease agreements with Comtree and the Outreach Center then?
We will have them on you.
But if this all goes to, you know, in its unders, you can't make it viable, it's still an asset of your church, the land.
That, uh, is, yeah.
You, you told me it's a subdivision, right?
It is, it is, but New Hope Fellowship is buying it right now, because.
And then you're gonna transfer it to a, to a, to a, to a free.
Because we're in the process, that's all in the process.
If you got it, then you can just drop.
That's not why we're doing it, because.
Say.
No, we're doing it because, because of grants.
Okay.
Because you can't, you can't get certain grants for certain things, so it needs to be set up for what it is.
So you're following the funds.
Wait, what I'm saying is, if you do, if you just said earlier, and I'm not, you said if the grants don't go through, you're purchasing it. You did.
Our intention is to purchase it.
So were you, then, once you do that, then is, is it gonna change, or are you still trying to do that whole?
Yeah, I mean, we want, that's what we wanna do, and we wanna do it here, and in that you all this, we're on target and told, um, you know, again. We really wanna be good with this, we want you guys to be good with it.
We're not good with it.
You have a voice, you have a voice.
And we're gonna use it.
That voice, I really do, I, I've heard many people say that things get pushed through, I was told by someone, and you should just push this through, you can do that. If you look, with the way it's set up, there's a condition you're permitted, you can do this, you can't do this big, but you can do it nice and fast.
You're picking up the county grant, you're gonna buy the land before they even prove it, right?
Pardon me?
You're gonna buy this land to be for Jefferson County and make it something that's worth it.
The, the plan is for us to buy the property, we have it in the contract that it's dependent on planning and zoning.
Okay.
That is in the contract, yeah.
Okay.
So we have purchased the project, the property, like.
Depending on planning and zoning.
All right, hey, listen, I don't wanna be your enemy, uh, we can disagree.
Oh, we definitely disagree.
The enemies, um, I think that, you know, we're all good people, and I get it, I get it, I get that you don't want it.
I don't think you get it.
There's not a place where people will say, hey, put this in my head, and so, I hope that as Jefferson Countyans, we can see the need, and we can move forward with this.
No.
I thought it'd be a great place.
I think if, uh, earlier you said that, you don't mind, we're transporting people now already, right, from this location? So what's the difference from transporting people to and from this location, that it is about seventy-seven acres?
Two, two parts, two parts, one of the, one of them is, there's a drug rehabilitation center that's.
And he doesn't wanna.
There are some issues like that, the other thing is our terrain, it would take a tremendous amount to get us set up, right, this already has buildings, right, okay?
But you're gonna pull those.
And the other thing is in the farthest, almost at the corner of the county, this is the center.
But isn't that the best thing though? Like, you, you said you didn't want them already, you know, I did rural areas where they can go to Walmarts, and they can go to all those.
Right.
Remote areas, right, isn't that where it's at?
Yeah, we're one mile off of Long.
So that's, that's like the.
Okay, we gotta do that, thank you guys for, I'm working out, we're wanting to do it outside, because we're thankful.